Every county in Georgia is in a regional commission. So that was, they're created by state law. But so the main reason we exist is to talk about and work on challenges that don't recognize political boundaries. Like in this picture, you see the Flint River. So water, transportation, air quality, the economic development around the airport, none of those things are contained into one city or one county. It takes a lot of people working together to improve those things and make them better and make them work the best that they can. So A R C tries to bring the public sector, private sector, nonprofits together around any table you want to talk about and try to make things better and make things work. So that's, that's kind of why we exist.
Are contained into one city or one county.
And so this is a quick overview of our board structure. We have a 41 member board for our 11 core counties. And that board is made up, this is by state law. The board is made up of the county commission chair, or the CEO in the Cabs case, of each of our 11 counties. Then there are 12 mayors, one from each county, except Fulton gets a North Fulton mayor and a South Fulton mayor. And then there are 15 citizen members. Our citizen districts are drawn similar to legislative districts, so they don't recognize the county, county lines, so they cross county lines. Your citizen member who represents the bulk of Clayton County is Charlton Bivens. I would imagine most of you probably know. And then we have representatives from the Atlanta City Council and the mayor of Atlanta as the largest city in the, in the region. So that's the makeup of our board. The map on the other side is a little confusing because it has several different colors, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But we do have a lot of different geographic configurations based on which function of A R C we're talking about. I'm getting ahead of myself here, but we'll see if I can do it without my notes. So essentially, because we do a lot of different things, we were created by the state, like I say, for community development. That's why the state created regional commissions, is to help make sure that cities and counties around the state are following the state's rules about zoning and, and development, and updating their plans every four or five years like they're supposed to. But over the years, we've taken on a lot of different hats and a lot of different responsibilities. So we'd like to think of ourselves kind of in three buckets of work. We do planning work, which is mostly focused on community development, transportation, and natural resources. We do community services work, which, and I'm sorry to hear that Tori is leaving, and I know our staff at A R C is sorry to see her go, but we do provide, most of the funding for your senior centers and Clayton senior services comes from the federal government through A R C to Clayton County. And we also, we, we do a lot of work with mobility services, primarily helping employers find ways to help their employees get to and from, work on buses, van pools, telecommuting, whatever, we help them find alternative commutes. And then we also do workforce development. Worksource Atlanta Regional is, is managed by A R C. We help employees find work and we help employers find qualified employees to fill their positions when they come through us. And then as a resource, one of the big things that we do in five of our counties is the federal government, I think about 10 years ago, came to us and asked us to run a piece of Homeland Security that's based here in metro Atlanta called the Urban Area Security Initiative. And then we also offer several leadership programs, like the Regional Leadership Institute and the Model Atlanta Regional Commission for high school students, and a couple of other leadership programs. And then probably the thing that most of our local governments use us for the most is our research and analytics. We have one of the best data and analytics groups you'll find probably anywhere in the country. We can give you a breakdown of almost any topic you want to look at, from the neighborhood level out to a statewide level, just depending on what you need to see. So feel free to call us and ask us to do that. They might complain to me, but they won't complain to you. So, and I'm gonna talk about our impact, I guess, twice, because I messed up this slide. But from, from a regional perspective, the impact that we make is, is quite large, as you know. So between now and 20, between 2024 and 2028, we have about $5.2 billion in state and federal transportation funding going out to our 19 counties that we do transportation planning for. We've, in 2023 and again in 2024, we get, we put a million dollars out in Livable Centers Initiative Study Grants. And I believe, if I remember correctly, in 2022, we did a grant, a $400,000 grant with you guys for Clayton County Lovejoy and Jonesboro to study the Tera Boulevard corridor. And I think those results just came out last year. So hopefully we'll be getting some, turning some dirt on some of that before too long. And then we also, last year, I think, did a supplemental grant for the downtown Jonesboro Livable Centers Initiative Study. So we added a little bit to the pot there to help downtown Jonesboro. We provided about $30 million last year in senior services in our 10 counties that we do senior services for. And then we also manage, at the state's request, we provide staffing for the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District, which is a 15 county water district that basically the watershed of the Chattahoochee River from Beaufort Dam till it leaves Fayette County on the south end of metro Atlanta. Any county that gets its water from Chattahoochee is in that water district. And as you can see, we've reduced per capita water usage by 30% since the year 2000. And to me, more impressive, we've reduced overall water usage by a little bit in that same time, despite the fact that we've added over a million people to that 15 county region. But we're still reducing the amount of water that we're using. And that's, that's very important, because as most of you probably know, metro Atlanta has one of the smallest water supplies of any major metro in the country. Because most of your major cities were built on rivers. And Atlanta was built on the railroad tracks. And so we have, the headwaters of the Chattahoochee River are right here in the North Georgia Mountains. And that's the, that's the water supply for 90 some odd percent of the residents of metro Atlanta. So we're very careful about water. And the main way that we've reduced water usage is through the toilet rebate program, where we've helped replace over 100,000 toilets around the region at little or no cost to residents when they apply for the program. We replace them with a, an old toilet with a high, with a high efficiency model. But the main thing is efficiency pricing, we call it, or conservation pricing, where the more water you use, the more expensive it gets. So you notice on your water bill, the first thousand gallons or whatever costs X amount. If you go beyond that, it costs a little bit more for every thousand gallons that you use, and that helps keep people's water usage down a little bit over time. Moving on to what we can do here in Clayton County specifically, one of the things that our data group does is every year, they provide a population estimate to each of our 11 core counties. And you can see, last year, we estimated your population at about 304,000 people. And we project that by 2050, you'll have almost 350,000 people here in Clayton County. And even better news for you is that your job growth is gonna almost mirror the population growth. So that's a great thing and a great opportunity for the folks here in Clayton County. A few investments that we've made over the last few years that are happening right now on the transportation side, we're making improvements on Tera Boulevard, Highway 23, and we helped to fund the Clayton County Transit Center as well. And then on the planning, community planning side, as I mentioned, the Tera Boulevard LCI study, we helped fund the Aratropolis, update the Aratropolis Blueprint Plan. And we also helped your staff recently with the work on some zoning, rewriting some zoning ordinance and redoing their zoning plan. So we provide everything from technical, not just money, but also technical assistance and things for counties who don't have the staff or the expertise and cities as well to do it themselves. And that's pretty much all I'm gonna talk about, except that if, if you want to learn more about this, oops, I pushed the wrong thing. But if you want to learn more about all of this, all these things, you can call me or email me. But more importantly, I want to invite you to our Regional Assembly of Public Officials, which was on the screen a minute ago and isn't anymore, on June the 26th, at the Cobb Galleria Center. And it's invitation only, it's only for county commissioners, mayors, and city council members from our 11 core counties. And we will be, we'll have a more in-depth A R C overview, but more importantly, some breakout sessions on things like affordable housing, freight movement, infrastructure resiliency to extreme weather events like extreme heat and extreme rain flooding, as we've, we're seeing more and more of those types of events, and they're getting more and more severe as the years go by. So we're trying to help you plan how to build better infrastructure, different infrastructure, make sure that your stormwater infrastructure is up to date and all that good stuff. So we'd love to see everyone at this event. We are charging $45 per attendee, just to help us cover some of our costs for the venue and the food that'll be provided.
That's good.
But we would love to see you there to come talk about these things. I think the most important thing we're doing for you there is we're gonna have what we're calling a resource center, which is gonna be about 12 kind of trade show booths manned by A R C staff, where you can come talk to them, our subject matter experts, about anything you want to talk about, from transportation to community development to water, aging services, whatever you want to talk about, there'll be somebody there who can have a quick conversation with you or talk a little more in depth about something that you want to learn more about. So that's, that's really what this thing is all about, is helping you understand what we can do for you, because that's, that's why we're here, is to help you all in the cities here in Clayton County. So, love to see all of you there. And again, I appreciate your time. We're, A R C is really excited about the future of Clayton County, and we want you to know that we're here to help you. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
All right. Also, you all are having something on May 22nd, Thursday, is that?
That's the Live Beyond Expectations.
So you've been also invited, I got an invitation, and I think some of the, some of the mayors and council members.
Right, yeah, so that's, that's mainly for, Live Beyond Expectations is one of our aging services programs. And they're, they're holding that because they're wrapping up their old plan and kicking off their new five-year plan. But the people who are invited to that primarily, so that, they like to look at age disparities around the region. And so they've looked at which parts of the region, which parts of each county have the most, have the worst, I want to try to say this the right way, but essentially, they're looking at like access to healthcare and, and healthy living, and the places where seniors or older adults don't have access to what they need. And that, that's really interesting, we have a slide on it, but don't have it in this deck. You can look at areas that are as close together as like six miles within the region, and you go from an average age of well into the mid 70s, people live to, to an average life expectancy in the low 60s. It's like an 11-year age gap within a six-mile difference. And that's based on a lot of different factors, but they're, and they're trying to look at all those factors and find the places that had the lowest life expectancy in each county, and inviting those elected officials from those small areas to come talk about that and try to figure out why that's happening in your area, and what we might be able to help you do about it, to help prolong people's lives.
That's awesome. All right, board members, are there any questions at this time, Mr. Jankelis?
Yes, who's the chairperson now?
The chairman of our board is Andre Dickens, Mayor of Atlanta.
Oh, okay. Mayor Dickens. And then how long is that?
It's a two-year term, and he's in the second year of it. So this December, we'll have an election, well, this, end of this year, we'll have an election for a new chair, or potentially to reelect him if he, if he wants to take that on again. I think it may be a little more, a little more of his time than he anticipated when he ran the first time. He's a pretty busy man.
Yeah. Thank you. I do have one.
Sure.
With the transportation funding, is this in conjunction with or separated from G-DOT funding?
So the, the numbers that I gave you include the state funding.
Okay.
So, but there, our, our plan has $72 billion, I think, in federal funding alone out to the year 2050. But that's a 19 county region that the federal government says we're responsible for planning for, for transportation, so.
Thank you.
So, so where do you all get your money?
Most of our funding is from the federal government. So like that transportation money, it comes through us, and we, we draft a plan, we work with your transportation professionals, and with Madam Chair, and Mayor Angelina Butler is your mayoral representative on our board, and they all get a say in that plan. And so we take a little administrative money out of that federal money to help create our plan and do all the legwork that goes with reading about all these different projects that you all send in, that you would like to see funded, and trying to figure out which ones, there's not nearly, even though it's $72 billion, that's not nearly enough money to build everything that all of our local governments need. So our staff goes through those and tries to figure out which ones are the, the kind of highest rated projects to, to build, so.
And is, I'm sorry.
So do we apply? I mean, do the counties apply for these funds?
Yes, yes. So we, for transportation purposes, we have what they call a call for projects for the transportation plan every year or two. And, and so the, the plan is a 30-year plan. Right now, it started in 2050, looks out, or it started in 2020 and looks out to 2050. But then there's a, and that's called the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And then within that, there's a kind of a rolling four or five-year plan, that's the next four or five years of that plan. And that, that has to be completely funded. So the money actually has to be in the bank to build those projects. And so every year or two, we have a call for projects to add new projects to that plan as projects get built and finished, or as a project that, you all might have requested a project 10 years ago, and finally the funding is here, and you realize, you know what, we'd rather spend that money on a different project now because traffic patterns have changed. We decided we want to focus more on trails and active transportation than on road improvements or whatever the case may be. Local governments, especially as elected officials change and things like that, on county commissions and city councils, they'll change their priorities. And so we always make room every year or two to subtract and add projects from that plan.
Well, I know we get several different funding for senior services.
Yes, senior services is, that's, most of that comes, is straight what they call formula funding from the federal government, where they, they send the money to us, and there's a formula based on population, the older adult population in your county that says you get X percentage of the money that came into the region, so.
How do you modify a project that is already in existence? Is there a way?
Project's already underway.
Correct.
You would have to come to probably our Transportation Air Quality Committee, or TAQC as we call it, and speak with them about altering that project within the plan and talk to, really the place to start is our transportation staff, and then they can help you take the right steps to do that.
Would that be our representative that we have, the person that represents the county?
You do have.
I'm actually on that committee.
Yes, you are on that committee, yeah. Each county chair is on that committee.
So what is Vivens?
So, if.
So, okay, so Mr. Bivens is?
He's, so that's the, that's the A R C board that I showed the slide for. Within that board, there are a few committees, and one of them is the Transportation Air Quality Committee, which the federal government says we have to have, and has to have every county commission chair, and then has a few other, has people from MARTA and Greta and the ATL, and some city representatives and a few citizen members as well, fill that committee out. And that's the committee, so we, I'll start at the bottom. We have a, we have a committee that's made up of transportation staff from all over the region, and they get together twice a month, and they talk about the projects around the region that are being built, need to be built, what are the, what are the big issues right now around the region. And they make recommendations up to that Transportation Air Quality Committee that includes mostly elected officials, people from the, is representative of the G-DOT Board, representatives from all over the place. And then they vote on what's been recommended to them by the transportation professionals. And then the A R C board votes on that as well. So it's kind of a complicated process. Transportation funding is very complicated.
But I brought Mr. Jankelis here today because A R C does a lot, and I think, you know, even when I was a board member, I wanted to understand what you all did and how you all worked with governments. And so that's why I brought you all here today, so you can explain what we do and the impact.
I tried to stay in there about 10 minutes.
Okay.
When I practiced it in the car, it was 10 minutes. But, but yeah, I'm happy to, to talk to you more in depth about how any one thing works, you know, the, the funding and procedure for each different function that we have, whether it's a state function or a federal function or whatever, that, all that stuff changes depending on whether you're talking about transportation or aging services or whatever.
It was easy for us too, when we had Crandall as our, as the chairperson.
Right.
That was very easy. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions at this time, board members? All right, thank you. So, next is item three, Onoresco Energy Services Project.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and Commissioners, good to see you all again. I'm sorry. Thank you all so much for having Onoresco here again. We have all met individually, and today we are just coming back to answer any questions that you all might have. Kind of recap some of the information about Onoresco, as well as talk to you all about the letter of commitment that was sent over to the COO, Mr. Stafford, as well as talk about next steps and what that might look like. My name is Renaya Bean, by the way. I am one of the senior account executives for Onoresco. We also have here Doug Henin, who's an engineer, and Sharice Seals, our regional manager. And just a, a brief recap of, about who Onoresco is and what we do. So Onoresco is an energy services provider. We've been in business over 40, 41 years, one of the oldest ESCOs here in the United States. And what we do is we help communities like Clayton County all around the United States generate capital and revenue by saving on your operational costs, your energy and water costs, as well as optimizing your operational and capital budgets. So in a nutshell, we help to monetize inefficiencies and create budget-neutral infrastructure projects with that. Now, during some of the conversations that we've had with some of the board members as well as some other stakeholders, we did understand that the Clayton County jail is one of your facilities that is in need of some improvement. So for the sake of our presentation today, I wanted to just kind of recap some of the work that we've done, excuse me, for the Georgia Department of Corrections, as well as the Alabama Department of Corrections. These were two pretty large projects that we took on, and both of these projects funded themselves. There was no need to increase budgets, no need to increase taxpayer burden. And they are still continuing to save the states money as, as today, I would say. Now, we did implement some common energy conservation measures in order to help to seek out or find the savings, some of those being HVAC improvements, lighting improvements, water conservation, and as you can see, the list, the list pretty much goes on. But the, the whole goal of our projects or the program is to generate these projects without having to come out of pocket or increase your budget, I would say. Now, although we have a lot of experience within the corrections facilities, we also have experience working with counties such as Clayton County, as well as the City of Atlanta watershed. So these two projects also pretty much pay for themselves. These were also energy service or energy conservation projects that helped to pretty much improve the infrastructure for Spalding County, as well as the City of Atlanta. Now, as you can see, for Spalding County, this was a smaller scale project, and I kind of put this up here just to show you all that we not only focus on small-scale projects, but anywhere from medium to large-scale, very complex projects as well. And as for, as far as the Spalding County project goes, they actually had a need for a roof renovation, and they did not have the actual funding for it. So it was upon, it was on us to come up with a program to help to find, find funds for that roofing renovation, as well as to help to improve some of the infrastructure within Spalding County as, as well. Now, the, the project that we did for the City of Atlanta was a, another larger scale project. This project was about a $78 million project, and this was also for the City of Atlanta watershed. So again, we not only focus on jails, we, we can also look at wastewater and water facilities. But this project, again, paid for itself. They needed a biosolage dryer and a UV disinfection station, and we were able to provide them with that, with, with the improved infrastructure. And again, all of these projects are continuing to save these communities. So again, in a nutshell, our program is pretty much designed to achieve multiple objectives. One of those being to reduce your deferred maintenance, and I know having some conversations within, within Clayton County and some of your stakeholders, I know that deferred maintenance is one of, you know, the top priorities for the county. So that would not only reduce deferred maintenance, but also these programs are designed to not have to come up with capital upfront. So there's no capital that you'll have to, you know, come up with in order to begin these programs. They also help to reduce your operating costs. They also help to reduce your energy and water usage, as well as helping to be a, you know, become a more sustainable community and keep, keeping in compliance as well. So overall, again, these, these programs are designed to help create budget-neutral projects. They are guaranteed results, so if we tell you that we are gonna save you a certain amount of money, we definitely have to do that, or we literally have to write you a check at the end of the year for the amount that we haven't been able to save. But as you can see, the bar graph kind of just shows what the before, during, and after looks like, as, as we, you know, move along with the program. So before, of course, you're use, you're, you're spending all of your money, excuse me, all of your funds is going towards utilities. But during the implementation phase, you start to, to see and realize about 20 to 30% of your savings, and then some of that money that you were spending towards utilities will obviously go towards the investment. And after the project is actually completed and paid for, then you'll start to realize even more additional savings. And as you can see, it's kind of indicated on the after bar that you're spending half of what you used to spend in utilities. Next, I'm going to bring up Doug Henin, and he's going to talk about, again, the letter of commitment, as well as next steps and what that might look like, and answer any other questions you all might have.
Thank you, Renaya. I think I'm still trying to recover to learn that I qualify for the Golden Olympics. That was a little bit of a shock tonight for me, and it really set me back a little bit. I was like, oh, wait, 45 years is a long time. And then when she said 1980, I went, wait, oh, okay, not that long. Anyway, I'm one of the engineers with Onoresco. I'd actually assisted Clayton County on a similar process to this almost 15 years ago. So it's been, Gail remembers, because she was actually on the board at that time, in the commission, and that project went very, very well. What we've been asked to do is put together basically a simple three-step process, kind of as a partnership between Onoresco and Clayton County, is a potential for you to consider. So the ask tonight is to consider the letter of commitment that we've outlined, and I believe everyone has been provided. Go, go ahead to the next slide. It's designed to be no out-of-pocket expense. It, it's designed to have no out-of-pocket expense upfront, so you don't have to have any money in the budget right now. The first step is a feasibility assessment. This is something we 100% take risk on ourselves to go and do. We would work with you to select six to 10 buildings, and hopefully, you know, some of your top buildings, I'm assuming the jail might be one of them, but we pick, you know, six to 10 of your top priorities. We gather the information for it, for all the utility, the square footage, and basically do a high-level engineering assessment for those buildings, and come back and say, okay, here's roughly percentage of savings that we see, here's what we think we can kind of fund, and give that information back to you. Again, no cost. And then if, if it looks like that's something that would provide value to you as a commission, we would move to the next step, which is an investment-grade audit. At the investment-grade audit, we put together an engineering break fee, you know, once we gather all the information, do all the benchmarking, again, that, that part's no risk. We'd come back with an, an agreement, that's the audit, with a break fee on it, that again, you don't pay at that time, and we would audit all your buildings. Now, that audit is very intense. Last time, I think, we got a filing cabinet box about this big, thousands of bills, put all that into the computer, did all the benchmarking, pull all that together, and then we have an idea of what the project might look like, which helps us put together that audit fee. We would then, assuming you approve that audit, we would go through and audit every single building, that's counting every single light bulb, looking at every single fixture, looking at all. looking at all your mechanical equipment, and put together a comprehensive plan for the entire county and come back with a guaranteed budget-neutral-type solution to help improve your infrastructure. If you decide to move to the next step, which is construction, again, you haven't paid anything. That audit fee gets rolled into the construction agreement, and we would actually implement all the improvements, get everything in place, and once everything's done, you would start to see the savings, and that's when payments would start. So, you're looking almost probably two and a half years from now, should you start today, before you make any payments, and you'd actually get all the improvements installed. Again, savings are guaranteed, performance is guaranteed. I know Gail's been through this once before with us, and that, that's about as simplified as I can make. And then this is a long-term partnership because Naresco sticks with you for the next ten to twenty years with that guarantee where every year we're generating that report, making sure you're achieving the savings. And Renaya, did you want to wrap up? All right, so the next step is actually approval of letter, letter of commitment, and that, that would not be tonight. Select six to ten sites. We'll pull together the information, and that would start the feasibility. And again, if we come back after the feasibility and you say this is not something, it doesn't make sense, there's no cost, and we just break the agreement at that point. Any questions?
All right, board members, are there any questions at this time? I'll start to the right of me. Commissioner Allen?
Yes, you said you guys, your company worked on a similar project?
I, I personally did.
Okay, can you tell us a little?
Yeah, I was actually employed by train. I was one of the train engineers at that time and put together all the project, did all the benchmarking, basically designed. So, we'd done some improvements out at the HR bank complex back at that time where we took some old steam boilers, put those to new condensing boilers, redesigned the chill water plant that went from a constant volume flow to a variable flow, did meter totalization between the HR bank complex and aquatic center that was there, which basically took the aquatic center and cut its bill almost in half because of combining the meters. Okay, so we, we look comprehensively at everything that could be done. At that time, we were using T-8 lighting, so we went from old T-12s to a higher-efficiency T-8. Now, we'd be looking at LED and upgraded lighting, low, low-flow water fixtures, like the DFAX complex that you have. All of those buildings had new HVAC done back as part of that project. So, those are some of the examples that I'd previously helped.
Thank you.
Commissioner Amber?
Yes, will you, will you all be working with our building and maintenance?
Absolutely, every step of the way. It, it's a very collaborative process, so I know they have a very strong preference for train equipment. They'll get train equipment. You know, same thing with controls. It's a, we want feedback not only from your staff, but if you guys have preferences as well, th- this is something we do as a team. It's not us telling you what you have to do.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah. Do you have, within that letter of commitment, is there a detailed scope and?
No. No, and, and, and here's the reason why, because it's a customized program. So, we don't know what that scope is going to be. It's kind of customized in a collaborative manner as we go through and do the audits. So, right now, like, the first step would be, we sit down with you if you approve it, and you tell us, here, here's six to ten buildings we'd like to look at, we'd like you to look at. We can talk about it, talk about what the needs are, and then we go out and kind of see, well, what can we accomplish for that, and come back to you and tell you what we think we can get done, and then see, does that make sense? And if you like that preliminary or feasibility, then we can move and include other, you know, like county-wide infrastructure. You have over two hundred buildings, about three million square feet. It's a lot of work, so it's all going to be customized.
All right, Chris Winnie, thank you.
Board members, are there any other questions at this time? Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Have a great evening.
You too. Next is number four, severing the, severing of the magistrate clerk's office from the Superior Court Clerk's office. Chief Magistrate Judge Keisha Righthill.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I come before you today as your chief magistrate judge to request that the magistrate court clerk's office be severed from the Superior Court Clerk's office. The magistrate court clerk's office should be assisting the magistrate court judges' chambers. However, unfortunately, that has not been the case. In its present form, the magistrate court clerk's office has done the opposite and has hindered and delayed the judges' chambers from performing our duties. I have laid out in your materials the numerous reasons why I'm making my request today, so I won't read all of those points. However, I will say this. The fact of the matter is, the current clerk spends minimal time physically in the magistrate court clerk's office. By minimal, I would estimate less than ten percent of her time. Her office is located on the first floor and the Superior Court Clerk's office. The magistrate court clerk's office is located on the second floor. How can a leader lead, guide, advise, answer employees' spontaneous questions, and observe customer service displayed by their staff if they are not physically present? They can't. How does a leader set an example of dress and demeanor, perform employee evaluations, and give constructive criticism and advice to employees in real time if they are not physically present? They can't. In nineteen ninety-five, the Board of Commissioners signed a resolution to appoint the Superior Court Clerk as the magistrate court clerk. The compensation was two hundred dollars per month. In nineteen ninety-six, the board increased that compensation to five hundred dollars per month. In twenty twenty-five, thirty years later, the Superior Court Clerk receives a monthly supplement of approximately six hundred dollars to serve as Clayton County's clerk of magistrate court. If you look at the court case summary in your materials, you will see the court with the highest volume of cases is magistrate court. The state court handles approximately thirty thousand cases per year, and they have one clerk solely dedicated to one court. The Clayton County magistrate court has over fifty thousand cases per year, almost twice as many as the state court clerk, and is sharing a clerk, which makes no sense. I provided OCGA fifteen dash ten dash one oh five in your materials. The very first line states that local law may provide for the Superior Court Clerk, which is one option, to serve as the clerk of magistrate court, or the state court clerk, which is a second option, to serve as the clerk of magistrate court. But there is a third option. The statute goes on to say, or for the selection of some other person as the clerk of magistrate court. I come before you today to say that the clerk of Superior Court was elected by the citizens of Clayton County to serve as the Superior Court Clerk. And there is a lot that is required by that position. The Superior Court Clerk's office is responsible for maintaining all of the Superior Court files, including but not limited to all of the felony cases, divorce cases, child support cases, adoptions, and maintaining our real estate documents, just to name a few. The Superior Court Clerk is responsible for handling jury duties as well as ensuring that the appropriate documentation is filed expeditiously as relates to inmates that may need to be transferred to various prisons. That's a lot. And as if that wasn't enough, the current Superior Court Clerk is responsible for maintaining the additional paperwork for magistrate court, which includes warrants, first-appearance hearings, preliminary hearings, bond hearings, all of our eviction cases, pre-issuance hearings, child abandonment hearings, civil motions, civil trials, civil settlement conferences, and nuisance abatement conferences for a whopping six hundred dollars per month. The magistrate court is the only court that operates twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We never close. The magistrate court clerk position is not a hobby or a part-time job. It is a full-time job, and the citizens of Clayton County deserve a clerk who can give their undivided attention to the business of magistrate court. My understanding of the statute is that the Board of Commissioners appointed the Superior Court Clerk and that the Board of Commissioners has the power to rescind that authority at any time. But Attorney Reed can answer any legal questions you may have as relates to your authority as a board. I have included the two thousand and eleven Board of Commissioners resolution in your materials. This fourteen-year-old resolution is the local law under which the clerk of Superior Court is currently operating under. Do other courts adopt this model of having a separate magistrate court clerk? Yes. In fact, Cobb County, which has over seven hundred thousand residents, adopts this model, and they are actually the gold standard for case management and efficiency among the state's magistrate courts. Cobb County Chief Judge Brendan Murphy appoints his own clerk. I've observed the Cobb County magistrate court clerk's office at length, and it runs like a well-oil machine. I've included a department hierarchy and clerk task breakdown from Cobb County magistrate court in your materials, just to give you a sample of their efficiency. The current magistrate clerk stated on a Zoom call last fall with the finance and HR department present that out of her thirty-eight clerks, only thirteen clerks should be allocated to the magistrate court clerk's office, and the remaining twenty-five clerks should assist her in Superior Court, even though we have the highest volume of cases than any other court. When I asked her how she came up with that number, she could not explain that to me. So, although based on her own admission, we should have thirteen clerks, I was cognizant of the status of the county's budget when I submitted my two thousand and twenty-six budget request in February, and I only requested five clerks. Those were the five vacant positions in her budget that she had not filled at that time. We can make up the difference in clerks with my current staff of full-time employees, part-time employees, and independent contractors, as my staff includes former employees from the clerk's office, and I have mandatory cross-training so that my staff is prepared to work in multiple roles in a moment's notice. So, what is the bottom line? What is my request to sever the court going to cost the county? I have three options that I would like you to consider. Option A is the amount in my February budget requesting four hundred fourteen thousand eight hundred twenty-eight dollars. That's the salary for the magistrate clerk and five office clerks. Again, five was used because that was the number of positions that were already in the clerk's budget but were sitting vacant. Option B, fifty-two thousand dollars. The person that I would appoint as the magistrate clerk worked four and a half years in the magistrate court clerk's office and has worked four and a half years in the magistrate court chambers. She knows both the front of the house, the clerk's office, as well as the back of the house. It is very proficient in both offices. Her current salary is forty-eight thousand dollars, and so the fifty-two thousand would only be to supplement her salary to make it equal to the entry-level salary of the state court clerk. Everything and everyone else that is in the magistrate court clerk's office would remain the same. Or option three. Option three would be a budget-neutral option. You can take fifty-two thousand dollars out of our, meaning the magistrate court's budget from other contract services and use it to supplement the magistrate clerk's salary. Under any option that is selected, we would provide extensive training to all of the staff, including but not limited to customer service, the ABCs of magistrate court, critical thinking skills, telephone etiquette, and the unauthorized practice of law. I want to close with this. I want to be very clear. This request is not personal. This is not a personal attack on the Superior Court Clerk. This is business. I'm about the business of Clayton County, the business of the magistrate court, and the business of the citizens of Clayton County. It's the job of a good captain to alert everyone when there is a hole in the ship so that something can be done before the entire ship sinks. I'm not here doing something that I want to do. I'm here before you as a leader doing what I have to do. There is a hole in the magistrate court ship. As your chief magistrate judge, I am bringing the issue to the attention of the Board of Commissioners and requesting respectfully that you take heed and act expeditiously. Please sever the magistrate court clerk's office from the Superior Court Clerk's office and allow me, as chief, to appoint a clerk that can dedicate not a small fraction of their time, but one hundred percent of their time to ensuring that the Clayton County magistrate clerk's office is run efficiently with five-star customer service for the citizens and visitors of this county. As the fourth busiest magistrate court in the state of Georgia, a full-time magistrate court clerk is what is in the best interest of the citizens of Clayton County. A full-time magistrate court clerk is what our citizens need and deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions at this time?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Judge Righthill. Let me ask first, have you, have you had discussions with Clerk Clemens and/or Judge Mack?
I have had discussions since the fall of two thousand and twenty-four to no avail.
Okay, so they've gone nowhere. I guess what? Well, I got several questions for you, and I'm looking at your options. I'm gonna start with option C. With your budget neutral?
Yes.
Where would the staff clerks come from?
There is already staff in the office. There is already desks in the office. Everything will remain the same with the exception of us having a full-time clerk. And so, that budget-neutral option is just taking fifty-two thousand dollars, which we don't want to do.
Understand.
Because we need it, but it's that serious that we're willing to do that so that, to supplement the salary so we can have a full-time clerk.
Now, you stated there were thirteen allocated up under the clerk, dedicated for magistrate. So, now, are those thirteen being utilized by this person, your new, your new clerk, or are they being moved over under your budget?
Everything would remain the same the way it is today. So, it, it's not costing the county any additional money. It's costing magistrate court because we would be losing fifty-two thousand dollars.
Okay.
But nothing else is changing other than the fact that we would have someone present and physically, and they can not split their time. That Superior Court Clerk's position is a full-time job. magistrate court clerk's position is a full-time job. It is, it's unreasonable to ask anybody to run up and down the stairs, to be able to manage two staffs, two offices, and do two full-time jobs.
So, at this moment, did you, are you currently, do you currently have staff and are they trained to do these tasks and duties?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then I have another question. With this backlog that you're speaking about, does this affect the jail population in any way?
Well, if the courts were severed, then the Superior Court Clerk could focus on the Superior Court issues and tasks that she has. So, one of those is the paperwork dealing with inmates have to move back and forth or what have you, be transferred here, there. So, instead of have to balance in her time between Superior Court and magistrate court, that, that task could be focused on, and maybe prisoners could, or inmates could be moved out quicker.
Okay, and, because I heard you speak about inmates that are supposed to be transferred to prison, but they're still in.
That's, that's a task of Superior Court, and so my, my position is, if, if the focus could be on Superior Court, then yes, it could impact the jail population because it possibly could have inmates moving at a quicker speed.
My, actually, my next question, Attorney Reed, it's for Attorney Reed.
Attorney Reed, come on up.
Does Clayton County currently have any local law? Does Clayton County currently have any local law that either prohibit or give us the authority to sever?
A local law that gives you ability to sever?
Does Clayton County have any local laws on that?
The only local is the resolution that the board passed in 2011 that authorized the, with the consent of the Superior Court clerk to just as that new person came into office, that it would be a standing resolution that they would be also the magistrate court clerk. But there isn't like a local act that speaks to that issue.
You have a local ordinance?
Yes, it's a resolution.
Okay, and because in both of those documents I read, and I'm not a lawyer, because it keeps saying at the clerk of Superior Court's request, a consent. What does that legally mean, meaning?
So there's, so Section B says, fifteen-ten, one oh five B, says that the consent of the Superior Court clerk is required in order for the clerk to be, to serve as the magistrate court clerk. And then also that same section says that the consent of the clerk of Superior Court and clerk of the State Court is required for the county governing authority to appoint the State Court clerk as clerk of magistrate court. That's where the consent language comes in.
So do we need or not need the clerk's authority if we were to move forward with this?
There is an argument both ways. There's an argument both ways. The, the, I don't want to necessarily get too bogged down into one of those I don't want to give somebody an argument. But yes, there is, there is, there is certainly authority for the board to take action to say that it doesn't need the clerk's permission to rescind that. And there's certainly also an argument that this board would require local legislation to create the same thing.
Is there local legislation?
Thank you.
Commissioner Hamburg?
Okay, because I'm just looking at this. As far as the makeup of what you're requesting, is it a whole section, is it one person, or is it persons?
In my first option, in option A, it was the clerk and five additional office clerks. But in my, in option B and option C, it's just the clerk with everything else remaining the same.
Okay, and you're saying that the clerk now has positions that have not been filled?
At the time that I submitted my request for the budget, my budget request in February, I did five because there were, after checking with HR, there were five vacant positions. So I can't speak to what it is as of today.
Okay, so is one of your three options, does it include the five or five?
The first option did.
Okay, I need to get that. I don't have, okay.
Okay, so ninety-five, it was changed to where the Superior Court and magistrate court were the same. Do we guys know how it was before? Did we have two separate clerks then, before they joined them together?
I went back, I saw from nineteen ninety-five. I don't know what happened prior to nineteen ninety-five. Nineteen ninety-five is when the Superior Court took on the duties of magistrate court. And understand, maybe at that time, there wasn't, the caseload was not as high. There was not as many tasks for the, both the Superior Court and the magistrate court. But times has changed, our population has increased. We've had COVID, we've had backlogs. And so if nothing else, we have more people, we have more cases, and that goes for both courts. So you're increasing the duties and the tasks. And how can you split yourself? You can't. You cannot say, honestly say, you're giving a hundred and ten percent of your time, your energy to both courts. You can't, there's no way you can do it.
And Judge Wright Hill, I want to say, I hear what you're saying. I wish you all could work this out. I really would like to hear from our clerk, Ms. Clemens, as well. I think that would definitely be fair. And Ms. Clemens is here. Would you come up for a minute, please?
I have a question real quick while she's coming. When did Ms. Wills retire?
Twenty-twenty-two, December twenty-twenty-two.
Twenty-two, and she was doing.
Ms. Clemens, can you? I just want to hear, I also want to hear your take on it as well.
Well, unless something was previously discussed, can we give her a chance?
Can we give her a chance?
Work up her plan or
Yes.
something, you know, unless you just want to speak to it now, I would want to hear your makeup.
I would want to hear your plan, that's what I was gonna say.
Yes, I would like the time to submit a plan to you if that is possible.
Yeah, let's do that instead of just coming up.
Perhaps for the next work session?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say, I want her to speak. I just wanted to say, if you had something that you want to bring before the board and also speak on that at the next work session, if it's okay with the board, I would like for you to come up and also speak at some point in time and tell us what your plan is as well. Is that okay, Mr. Reed? I'm asking.
That is.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I just want to make one correction today, though. There are only ten positions allocated currently for magistrate court. When you look at our overall budget for Superior Court clerk, it encompasses five different departments. And so there are only ten in my budget and have been in the budget for the past, under the past two clerks for magistrate court. And I have gone every year in my budget hearing and asked for additional staff for magistrate court as well as Superior Court to no avail for the past, since I took over January twenty-twenty-three. So I just want that to be on record.
Thank you, thank you so much. All right.
May I ask when the next work session is?
It will be, it will be June, second Tuesday in June. And I'll just look at the calendar. It will be June the tenth. All right, thank you.
I will see you then.
All right, board members, are there any other questions at this time? Thank you so much, Judge Wright Hill. And we appreciate you, thank you. And next, we will move to item number five, position request, add delete, chief of staff, juvenile court. Come on up, Judge Fox, you ready?
Chairwoman and other fellow commissioners. So we have always had a chief of staff position. And so I requested it in the last fiscal year for a chief of staff position. My understanding that the departments, we weren't adding any new positions. So it has really created a hardship this fiscal year not having a chief of staff. I do have a court administrator who is present, Mr. Slay and myself, and we've kind of been acting as chief of staff. Now, this position is so important. I know that the county is in the process of balancing, you know, the budget and different things like that. So we've been able to actually go through our budget. There have been some movements with the positions. So we're creating a budget-neutral request for a chief of staff. We're actually taking two positions, someone retired, a long-term employee. So we're just asking that when you all receive that request, because we've been working with Finance, just with the numbers and, you know, the grade and step and all of that, for you all to approve that it's actually going to be for a chief of staff and two part-time clerk positions. So that's my ask for that, once you all receive that from Finance.
All right, you want me to go to the next one, which is, any questions? Are you finished with the chief of staff?
Yes, unless you all had any questions about that.
In regards to that position?
Can you repeat, you said you have somebody retiring and you're going to redefine that position?
They actually already retired. And that position was our deputy chief of investigations. So they retired in April. So we were able to kind of look through, and so we were able to take that position and one court officer position to bring a budget-neutral request.
Okay.
Okay, so you're adding or deleting chief of staff, it has add slash delete.
So we were going to delete the deputy, what was it? Deputy chief of investigations and also to delete one juvenile court officer position in order to add the chief of staff position along with two part-time clerk positions.
Is that budget-neutral?
Yes, that would be a budget-neutral request. And I think we're just finalizing that with Finance. So we've been working with them. So I'm just asking that once you all receive that, if you all would approve that.
Have you had your hearing, the budget hearing?
We haven't, well, I know that we've previously met, yes, at the beginning of the budget cycle. And so we've kind of been continuing to have conversations with Finance as well as they're preparing the budget. Which is why I just wanted to give a brief overview so that once you all actually receive, you know, those recommendations and are kind of going through them. I know you all are tasked with approving a budget by June thirtieth of this year. I wanted to kind of come forward and just kind of briefly give you an overview of what we're requesting on behalf of juvenile court.
So we'll move on to item six, which is the budget meeting request.
I have another question. Okay, now, does that need to go through HR? The add and deleting of a position?
Good evening, Board of Commissioners, and good evening to our Clayton County citizens. At some point, HR would definitely be called in to work with Judge Fox and Finance. So yes, ma'am, we'll be a part of it. My understanding is the presentation today was just to, as she stated, to let the board know that that is a request. But we'll come in when the time comes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next, we will move to item six, which is the budget meeting, a request for FY twenty-twenty-six, juvenile court, again, Judge Fox.
All right. Good evening again. I just wanted to do a brief presentation about what we do in juvenile court as I know that you all are in the midst of approving a budget for our next fiscal year. I'm here to explain what we do in juvenile court and what we need to operate for the court so that we can be in compliance with state and federal laws. We have three full-time judges, myself, I'm the chief judge. We also, I was appointed in two thousand and twenty-one. We also have Judge Leslie Military, she's here as well. She was appointed in two thousand and twenty-two. And we have Judge Christopher Walker, who was appointed in two thousand and twenty-three. The type of cases that we handle, we handle delinquency cases. Now, these are akin to adult criminal cases, but juveniles don't commit crimes, they commit delinquent acts. We handle dependency cases. These are our abuse and neglect cases. So when kids are taken into foster care, into state custody. We handle chin's cases. Now, these are children in need of services. So they haven't been arrested, they're not in DFAX custody, but maybe they have unruly behavior, they have runaway issues, their parents or legal guardians have come to the court for services. We handle truancy cases. Now, these cases are referred by the school system. So these are students that by law have missed more than ten days unexcused absences and the school system files truancy complaints. We handle traffic cases. So these are our youth that are driving on the roads of Clayton County, right? And they are getting traffic tickets, just like adults. So we have, we have traffic court, right, for our youth as well. And we also, we have judicial bypass cases. Now, these are very sensitive cases. This is when the court steps in in lieu of a parent or legal guardian to authorize certain medical procedures. Now, we are appointed by the Superior Court judges. So we are also designated as Superior Court judges. So with that designation, we assist Superior Court when they need assistance. So if they, you know, are at a conference or maybe they're in a jury trial and we need to cover a calendar, we assist in Superior Court. We also assist with their accountability courts as well when they're unable to appear for those. In juvenile court, we take transfers from Superior Court, right? Those cases are transferred. An example might be, there may be a divorce case pending in Superior Court that has maybe a complicated child custody issue. Superior Court may transfer just that issue of custody to juvenile court where we can appoint a guardian ad litem, do a whole investigation, send a report and recommendation back to Superior Court so they can finance the other issues involved in that divorce case. We also handle transfers from probate court. A typical case might be a guardianship matter that involves complicated issues regarding minor children. They will go ahead and transfer that guardianship case to juvenile court. Child support cases. Now, we handle all of the out-of-state child support cases that come through Superior Court. That's really when there's, when a party was living in another state, they already had a child support order. Now they have moved to Clayton County and we need to domesticate that order. We also handle some of the in-state petitions as well. Now, we also handle TPOs. Now, these are temporary protective orders. Now, we've been handling these and assisting Superior Court with these TPOs since October of two thousand and twenty-three. Now, these are very serious cases when people come to the court to get a TPO. And probably some of the only cases where a petitioner can come in to the court, file a petition, meet with a judge to have an ex parte hearing, and also leave the courthouse with an order the same day. So we are operating those TPOs from the time the courthouse opens at eight until five o'clock because those are very serious matters. We are also operating twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Our judges, our three full-time judges, were always on call. We are on call because kids commit crimes at night. They commit crimes on the weekends, right? So when court is not in session. And so what that means is we get calls. So a judge and a court officer is always on call. If a police officer is arresting a youth in Clayton County, they cannot take that youth directly to the detention center. They have to contact our court first. We have to do a whole intake process, a risk assessment, find out the history, and they have to get authorization from a judge prior to actually detaining that youth. And then we have to hold a hearing within forty-eight hours. The same thing with DFAX. If DFAX wants to do an emergency removal, which means they want to go and take law enforcement into a home and take someone's children, they have to contact our intake first and to get authorization from a judge. We have to make sure that it's actually an emergency request and not something that can just be set for a hearing. Those must be held within seventy-two hours. So for those emergency hearings, we hold them every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. But we're processing them whenever they come in, at night, on the weekends, all of that. Our departments, not going to go through all of them, I've listed them. We have, we have twelve different departments with our full-time employees, part-time employees, our contractors, fully staffed. We're probably about almost eighty employees. So we have a lot of people, we're one of the bigger departments. Now to the fun stuff, our budget concerns. I'm kind of listed some of the major things that we're kind of working. I'm kind of listed some of the, the major things that we're kind of working on and what our ask is. And I just wanted you all to kind of have this information so when you do receive um the information, the recommendation from Finance, that you kind of know from juvenile court what we need to operate. Part-time salaries. This isn't for any additional part-time positions. We do not have the funds to actually fund the part-time positions that we have. Meaning we have part-time positions, I'm just requesting the amount so that for those part-time workers, they can actually work twenty hours a week. Sometimes those positions aren't funded, and so they can't actually work that, the part-time hours that are required. Our contract services, we have a lot that comes out of our contract services. We asked for a little bit more, we have three hundred and sixty-six thousand, um, six, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars. Um, currently, the recommendation is at two hundred. We will not be able to operate, we would have to cut um some of the things that we are doing that we are required to do um if we do not receive that money for our contract services, which includes clinicians that provide treatment, um, case managers, interpreters, electronic monitoring for the children, mediation shredding, there are a lot of things that come out of our contract services. So we're really just asking to have the same amount in our budget that we currently have. Our pro temp fees. Now, this year I asked for a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Last fiscal year, in consultation with Superior Court, I was a- actually asking for a full-time associate judge. Um, and that was because of how many cases we have and that we're also assisting with Superior Court. We're not asking for that position again, because we know getting a full-time judge comes with the full-time salary plus benefits, and a judge needs a secretary as well. For this, the ask is just for the funds so that we're able to use our pro temp judges, who are also attorneys, or they can do other things, so it's not with benefits, so that we can operate the court. The recommendation, and, and we've actually come up um since we've done this slide, and I've been speaking with Finance, but a hundred and thirty-eight thousand so that we have the assistance to operate, do our emergency hearings while we're doing all of those other hearings um as well with the three full-time judges. Our indigent defense fees, this is really for us non-negotiable. We have to have attorneys in court, I mean, by law. We not only have to appoint the children an attorney, in the dependency cases where um parents, their, their children are being removed from the home, the law says we have to appoint the parent an attorney or a legal guardian. And if it's a mother that has custody of the kids, or a father, and the other parent shows up, then we have to appoint that person a parent. And now what we're having, what we're seeing more often, we're seeing grandparents come to intervene because they're hearing that if there's a possibility that maybe my grandchildren are going to be placed in foster care, in defax custody. So they will file motions to intervene. A new statute, uh, I think it was in twenty twenty-three, says that we have to also appoint that person an attorney if they intervene into the case. And we are seeing kind of more family members outside just the mother and the father that are coming to court and want to be involved um in those cases.
Excuse me, Judge.
Yes.
Does that mean you can have probably three attorneys for a family?
Yes.
Child?
Yes.
Of mother, father?
Yes, yes. And I believe Commissioner Allen came to uh see one court hearing where I had, let's see, I might have had four attorneys um in that case. There was a mother, a father, and two grandmothers. So there was the maternal grandmother who said, I can take these kids if the parents, you know, aren't doing what they need to do. But then there was also a paternal, a paternal um grandmother as well. So that's not on every case, but there are some cases where we do have to appoint additional attorneys. Um, which is good, you know, we want the kids to have somewhere to go and not have to place them, you know, in state custody. So for this ask for three hundred and twenty-four thousand, we have each judge, there's three judges, and we have two judges in each courtroom that are under contract. And so that's a parent attorney and a child attorney, right? The parent attorney handles the cases for whichever parent or guardian, you know, primarily has the children. We have to appoint additional attorneys if there are other parties that come. But those contracts for those six attorneys come to three hundred thousand dollars on their own. The other twenty-four thousand that we requested is in the event for those other cases where we may need to appoint additional attorneys. Um, training and travel, now this is for our whole staff. In that training and travel budget, probably half of that we are using to actually reimburse, reimburse our court officers. Alright, they're using their personal vehicles, because we don't have enough juvenile court vehicles, to actually go do what they are required to do um under state law. They have to go visit these children at home, they have to go visit these children at school. They have to make monthly kind of in-person contacts. Sometimes it's not just once a month, usually about twice a month contacts with these children. So we have to reimburse our um court officers their mileage. In addition to that, so then we have maybe the other half, twenty-five thousand, for all of our mandated conferences that we have to do, which includes the judges, our clerks, and our court officers that have to be certified. Our medical services fee, that actually is for a clinician to provide. There's already an existing contract to provide mental health services. Um, so I'm just asking that when, once you all actually get that, um, I guess, recommendation from Finance, um, that you look at those particular line items in that request, and I know we haven't received it yet. And I did want to talk about, just briefly, just on a good note, um, really why this, this matters um for what we have to do. So last year, the judges, we got together, the three of us, because we started seeing that we were every week getting children in front of us that had firearms, right? You know, and we have kids and they're going to school, so this was becoming a huge issue. We started a handgun intervention program, we called it CHIP, for Clayton County Handgun Intervention Program. It started in January, just started the program, we just did it, right? We have to do something because we have kids with firearms, right, in, in our county. We didn't come to the board to ask for any money, but people started calling me, oh, hey Judge, I heard you were doing this program. Channel Two called, they did a, a special on it. Um, and we've been very successful um in doing that, and we've continued it. We're actually on our third session with the program. But since our first session, it's kind of like an intensive eight-week program where the kids really learn about the consequences of carrying handguns. But these are kids that are on probation, um, so it's not really voluntary. Um, so it's something they have to do. But we had a youth that graduated from the program, he finished school, he had a part-time job at Wingstop, he actually got promoted and became a supervisor.
That's awesome.
He called us back, right, about a year later and said, you know, I'm so thankful for what I learned and for you all kind of pouring into me. And he was like, I want to give back. And so he actually wanted us to send some youth that went through the same program that he went through, um, bring them up to Wingstop, that's where he's a manager, so that he could hire them and kind of give back in that way. Um, so I just wanted to share you all with that, leave that with you so that you kind of see what we're doing. And the other programs, we have other programs, and we're looking for grant funds for those. But we just want to make sure those key things that we had in our budget from last year or currently, that we're able to keep those so that we can continue operating.
Well, thank you Judge Fox, with all that you all do over there. We um, we are definitely going to look at your budget and take some things in consideration as a board. Um, Board members, are there any questions at this time, Commissioner Allen?
No questions.
Alright, Commissioner Davis.
Uh, yes, uh, what's your age group, range from what age to what age?
Well?
As far as juvenile court?
Alright, well, we go all the way up. So for dependency cases, we start at babies, and that's typically babies that are born in the hospital or the doctors call because they find out that they're born with drugs in their system. Um, so we have babies all the way up until um eighteen. Now, some youth are in foster care until they're eighteen, if they haven't been able to be reunited with a family member or they have not been adopted, um, and they're still in foster care. And then once they turn eighteen, if they sign themselves back into foster care so that they continue re- receiving services, we're still reviewing that case. So that, that child could be nineteen, they could be twenty. Um, so some kids, they're unfortunately in the system for over ten years, and we're still, we still have that case because maybe they never got adopted or reunited with their family. For the delinquency cases, we handle cases where children have those criminal offenses when they're under seventeen years of age. Once they reach seventeen, they go to adult court.
Uh, one other thing, I would love to have seen uh your present budget to compare what you're asking. Do you have that?
Yes, we can provide a copy, and I think that we did have a copy and it just didn't print out right. So we would, I would definitely, I would make sure.
I would love to see that.
Send that to you, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Just have one question.
Yes.
Were any of the positions that, I mean, we're looking at what you've requested here, provided or funded by ARPA funds? And if so, how much or how many?
No.
Okay, alright.
We actually, we don't have any ARPA money.
Okay.
And so we're not, that's not really a part of, of our budget.
Great, thank you.
It was before, but it's not now.
But it's all gone.
It's all gone, yes.
Alright, any other questions at this time? Alright, thank you Judge.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. Next is item number seven, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seventy-three, Mr. Reed?
Good evening again, um, first hour of this presentation, I'm just kidding.
First hour.
I was looking to see if y'all were still woke.
It's seven fifteen, Mr. Reed, you got the seven twenty. You got the seven twenty.
It won't even take that long.
That cuts yours down to five minutes.
It won't even take that long. So, uh, very quickly, um, the reason why I'm presenting this is at the request of Commissioner Reeves. Um, and the, um, just going to give you a quick summary of what I'm going to talk about, which is an overview of the changes, explanation, general over, explanation of each subsection, and then answer any questions that you have. So first, why was this ordinance even up for change? Well, um, there were some questions that were raised about interpretation, uh, including when was the last day that items could be added to the agenda? When was the last day that uh documents could be added, supporting documents? Uh, what was the process for special call meetings? Um, and then what was the policy for when you add things to the consent agenda? And I think even at this last meeting, there was a question about that. So the current draft is designed to answer these questions and clear uh any confusion. So what is the change? The ordinance changes and clarifies the process for adding items to the agenda and removing items from special, I'm sorry, regular, special call and special circumstance meetings, which I'll explain what special circumstance meetings are in a minute. Uh, it also changes and clarifies the process for provi- um, provision and production of supporting documents for all meetings. A lot of P's there. Uh, also changes and clarifies the process for providing notice to the board and the public, and also uh sets a policy for adding items to the consent agenda. So for regular meetings, those meetings are defined under section two dash thirty-one of the Clayton County Code as the meetings that occur on the first and third Tuesdays. Um, the agenda items must be submitted to the BLC clerk by the close of business uh Wednesday before the regular meeting. Commissioners can do so directly, and department heads, any submissions they have to do are, those are vetted by the chief operating off, chief operating officer. Supporting documents for regular meetings are provided to the BLC clerk by close of business Thursday. For regular meeting.
Go back to that one.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Oh, okay. So for regular meetings, um, the preview of the agenda is sent to the Board of Commissioners after the close of business on Thursday. Um, this was an, a request that was added uh from Commissioner Reeves at the April fifteenth meeting. Uh, so that's a little slight change from what was presented to you at that time. The final agenda is with supporting document is sent, supporting documents is sent to the board by the clerk by close of business on Friday. The agenda is posted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, and if the BLC clerk is unable to post that agenda by the close of business Friday, then notices provided on the county website and any other media uh with the new anticipated posting date. Again, this was the request that was made by Commissioner Reeves at the April fifteenth uh board meeting. Special call meetings, they are called pursuant to section two dash four of the Organizational Act and state law, basically any meeting that you need to have for any reason. Uh, for those meetings, agenda items are presented to the uh BLC clerk no less than twenty-four hours prior to the date of the special call meeting. Commissioners, again, can do so, uh, submit their agenda items directly. Uh, department heads, again, their submittals are vetted by the chief operating officer. A preview agenda is provided to the board by the clerk on the day that the special call meeting is confirmed. So let's say you had one, uh, you all decided that you wanted to have a special call meeting for Tuesday. If you all decided on Thursday that that's what you wanted to do, you all will get a preview of that agenda on the day that you all said, yes, we want to have that. For special call meetings, the supporting documents are provided to the BLC clerk, I'm sorry, BLC clerk by close of business on the day preceding the special call meeting. That final agenda um is sent to the board um by the BLC clerk by the close of business on the day. Um, so in other words, you get the final agenda to the, uh, supporting documents to the clerk, and the final agenda with those documents is also provided to the board by the day preceding uh the special call meeting. Again, same thing as with the regular meetings, agenda is posted according with the Open Meetings Act, and if they're unable to clip, um, should be unable to post by the close of business prior to the special call meeting, then the notice is provided on the county website with an anticipated boat, uh, posting date. For special circumstance meetings, um, there was nothing in our code that even dealt with special call meetings. So that was added. Special circumstance meetings, there was nothing in our code that dealt with that, and that's defined by state law as when special circumstances occur. And they're so declared by an agency, yes.
Example.
So let's say, um, it was something that had to be an emergency that you couldn't even give the twenty-four hours notice. Um, and you would have to call a meeting like the same day, and you'd have to articulate the reason why you were holding the meeting with such short notice. State law gives you that ability to do so. Um, and you'd have to give the reasons why you could do it with such short notice. So in that type of instance, the, the agenda items are submitted to the BLC clerk as soon as reasonable possible under those circumstances. Again, commissioners can do so directly, department heads, submittals are vetted by the COO. There is no preview agenda provided because such short notice. Um, the supporting documents that are provided to the BLC clerk as soon as reasonable under the circumstances, that agenda and the supporting documents basically provided to the board by the clerk as soon as reasonable under the circumstances. Final agenda published pursuant to the Open Meetings Act. There's no alternate publishing date because this is a meeting that you would have to have with such short notice that would need to be posted right then. So that takes care of all three types of meetings. The net, the um, ordinance also talks about how agenda items are handled. So for adding an item to the agenda occur at, that can occur at a regular or special call meeting if that action has to be taken or take place prior to the next uh regular meeting. So let's, I won't go into, you all know what adding items to the agenda is. So it requires a motion, a second, and a majority vote in the quorum. Uh, for removing an item after, from the agenda, it's the same thing. It can occur at any meeting, whether it's a regular, special call meeting, or a special circumstance meeting, upon a motion, second, and a majority vote. Uh, for your consent agenda, the consent agenda sets a policy that it, only thing that goes on consent agenda are routine, non-controversial items. Um, those items should be where there's enough information for you all to be take action. There's no known conflict of interest, and the expecta- expectation is that it's unanimous approval without a debate. without a debate. So we're really trying to streamline what goes on the consent agenda, but if that's wrong, you all still have the ability to remove those items without a need for a second to the regular agenda, and the consent agenda is moved, approved with one motion, a second, and a majority vote of the quorum. That's the overview of the whole thing. I think that's less than five minutes, any questions for me?
Any questions at this time, board members?
I'll ask you later.
Are y'all good? Y'all got this?
I'll ask them later.
Okay.
Alright, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed, awesome job. Next, we will go to Ms. Danielle Smith, Chair of the Alzheimer's Center, a request for additional operating funding for the Alzheimer's Services Center.
I'm just kind of following, because I don't have my, well, I guess I can see. Thank you, good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, everybody from Clayton County family that's here, thank you so much for allowing us to be here this evening. I won't keep you long, I'm not here as your, look, Commissioner Davis is like, yeah? I'm not here as the Tax Commissioner tonight, I'm here on behalf of the Alzheimer's Services Center. So I am currently the Chair of the Board, you can go on to the next slide and start the video. I'll start just with a little intro video, can the board see that? I don't know if y'all can see it, can you?
Yeah.
Oh, can you?
We got it right here.
Alright, this is just a little video from last year's Fall Festival. I joined the Board last year in the midst of campaigning and all kind of other stuff going on, but I really love the mission and the vision, I love the services provided for our seniors, and we pull together a good team of people now to really guide this place in the right direction and rebrand and rebuild to what we know it could and should be, to service our seniors, their caregivers, and everyone else. And so, the Fall Festival is yet just one event that we host throughout the year. We have a golf tournament upcoming, which I just gave you guys flyers for, so if you can come, please do, okay? That's June second, and that goes for the public as well as the Board, you all are welcome. It's a great time for those who like to golf. If you don't golf and you just want to sponsor, we certainly would appreciate that too, okay? You can move on, James. The folks that know, our DA's mom attends the ASC as well, and so she is a major supporter of the ASC and the things that we're trying to do. You can go ahead. Who do we serve? Well, the ASC has been in Clayton County for well over thirty years now, not just servicing residents in Clayton County, but this entire Southern Crescent area, offering support for those who suffer from Alzheimer's and other related dementias. I've learned a lot, needless to say, in the course of this year about how this particular disease debilitates our citizens, especially in Clayton. Go ahead. Why do we serve? Well, right now, this is as of twenty twenty-four, thirteen point four percent of our residents, that's Clayton County, sixty-five and older, are living with Alzheimer's disease. That's around four thousand individuals, that's just here, which is above the Georgia State average. That says a lot, and it's only expected to increase this year in twenty twenty-five. And so, there's work to do. I'm a fan of an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, right? So when you see this trend coming, twenty twenty-five, they're expecting this number to increase by nearly twenty-seven percent. That's a lot. And so, in certain, you know, underserved communities, we tend to see this issue more. Our programs, our services, I'm not gonna read it all, you all can see, we do have an adult daycare, that's the main service provided right now. And again, I go back to our DA, right now, she is even seeking a facility outside of Clayton for Mondays and Fridays, because we're only open right now since COVID, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. So needless to say, one of the first goals is to get this place back running full-time Monday through Friday, because we lose the opportunity to serve residents and those in the surrounding area, because we're not open every day, and there are families who need these services for their parents or other relatives. But caregiver support, once a month, we host the caregiver support class, because this doesn't just affect those that are suffering with Alzheimer's, it affects the caregivers of those same people. Therapeutic activities, we have local hospice companies that come in and do activities with our seniors. Right now, we're working toward setting up the raised garden beds, et cetera, in the backyard, the grounds are beautiful, everybody, but to start some horticulture activities to give our seniors things to do. I know you couldn't hear in the video, but DA Mosley commented, she said, every time I come pick up my mom, she's tired. I think they're making her work, right? But it is, it's fun, not just for the folks providing the service, but for our seniors as well. And the big thing we're looking to do, and hopefully have launched by January of twenty twenty-six, we got a whole respite wing with eight beds that were licensed for. Finally, it was only approved for five beds, since last year, we've gotten the approval for the additional three, that's twenty-four seven services provided for respite care and personal care home services. Go ahead. So I know the funding request may seem big, it's reasonable when you consider this full-scale operation. Rather than putting a Band-Aid on it, I wanted to make a reasonable request, so we don't have to come back anytime soon asking for more. But I will say this, it should have said funding goal, not necessarily request, but the goal for right now is to get us through another year, right? Without this Robin Peter to pay Paul kind of situation. General operations, out of that two hundred and twenty-five, a hundred thousand toward general operations, the administrative functions, first and foremost, opening five days a week instead of just Tuesday through Thursday, COVID is, is over. And so, to open the facility, all the things that are required, the overhead costs when we go back to opening five days a week, programming costs in terms of the different programs that we need to implement for our seniors. While we have some limited programs now, needless to say, everybody on the team sees how we can expand those programs for our seniors. And then, transportation costs, we do have a small van, it needs some work, there are a lot of things that need some work at the ASC, but this would help cover those costs. In addition, seventy-five of that two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar request, we would anticipate putting toward caregiver and support staff compensation. We all know, even on the government side, a big issue is making sure our salaries line up to industry standard, not only so we can obtain good quality employees, but be able to retain them. And so, right now, our staff at the ASC is paid well below industry standard, and if we go to five days a week, that's gonna require additional staff, you know, above and beyond who we already have in place, but it would definitely attract the level of caregivers that we need at the ASC, okay? And then, training and compliance, a big part of quality staff is the training to support them in the process. And then, the facilities maintenance, a big part of our facilities maintenance right now is the HVAC system. We've been dealing with this, so we do currently have an MOU with our senior services, that's for training, we offer trainings at senior services, and I'm sorry, I got to yapping, I ain't even introduced, we do have our new executive director, so the ASC currently has a new executive director, can you stand up, Dr. Render? So this is Dr. Jane Render.
Good evening.
And so, she doesn't just do this to do it, she has a heart for this as well, she was the caregiver for her mom before she passed away, and she had Alzheimer's, so she knows this lane, she understands the needs of both the people, not just suffering with Alzheimer's, but their caregivers as well, because she was one. And so, I've known her, I know she has a heart of compassion for people, and has a heart of excellence to make sure we do this and do it right. Mr. Mike Brown has been with the Board, oh my, for eons, yeah, look, Commissioner Davis said forever, but he too, he brings to us the wisdom and the understanding of what has been, right, to help us understand where we need to be headed from here. And so, I appreciate you both for being here tonight and support. HVAC system, yes, in need of much repair, so in addition to our MOU that we have with senior services, we're also looking to get an MOU with building and maintenance, needless to say, they have been in full support of us since I've been there since last year, they've been coming, helping out as much as they can, but they had to kind of pull back, because there's nothing in place authorizing them to do what they do to support the ASC. So I would beg the Board to please consider an MOU for the ASC and building and maintenance as well. There was some water damage from previous years, and there's a big open space in the wall right now, it needs to be repaired, drywall, paint, et cetera, and then the dining area, this is an area, you know, where all the patients come and they need, it needs to be revamped. Looking ahead, what do we see? Well, we definitely want to increase our intern program in partnership with Clayton State University. We have already reached out and are in talks to get interns from Clayton State, that will help some of the staffing issues. Some strategic initiatives to launch that twenty-four seven personal care home side, the respite services, caregiver training expansion. Our caregivers, you guys, this wears caregivers out. I know one personally, and she didn't even know I was the Chair of the Board, but somebody else that I know, and I didn't know her mom had Alzheimer's, and she was breaking down, she's like, I don't know what else to do, like, and I was like, I didn't know, right? So immediately, we just connected her with the ASC, but it's a lot of folks that don't know the ASC is there, and they're right here in Clayton and need the services that we provide. For years, the building didn't even have a sign, right? So we have temporary signage up now, so folks can drive by and see what's there, but even at our Fall Festival last year, all these different community stakeholders, you know, our Sheriff's Office was there, the Fire Department was there, the Water Authority, all these folks from Clayton County, and a lot of them were like, we didn't even know what this place was, right? PD knows, because if the alarm goes off, who's coming, right? But other than that, people really didn't realize that it was still there and operational, so that's a big part of, you know, we'll be having to put out some funds for marketing purposes to let folks know that it's still here and the services that we do provide. And yes, we want to expand the adult daycare program, I told you about the horticulture, they do, they do dance therapy, we'd like to see about implementing pet therapy, but just to expand the services that we offer. Are there volunteer and support opportunities all day? So I say that for anyone who is still here, and look, anyone on the Board as well, we have opened, honey, we need volunteers to come in and support the programs that we offer, or donate and be a monthly supporter. This is something that I do believe with all my heart is beneficial to Clayton County, and it's a positive piece of what we offer here, and so, we, I really hope that you all will consider, it may not be the whole amount, but whatever you would be willing to consider, we would certainly appreciate it. Go ahead, James. You can get involved, if you want to sign up for the golf tournament, be a sponsor for the golf tournament, or just sponsor in general, make a donation, ASCA or ASCGA.org, follow us on Facebook, and join us in making a difference, okay?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you all, are you all still doing the overnight services as well, with some of the clients stay overnight?
So that's the respite and personal care home side. So that's what we're looking to launch, or relaunch, right? So we're now approved for all eight beds.
Good.
And so, that's another piece, because we have families, they may want to go on vacation or what have you, and need somewhere for their loved one to be able to stay. And so, yeah, it's not, we're not operating now, that's gonna require additional staff, it's ready, but we've got to get things in order.
Got you. Board members, are there any additional questions?
Well, not a question, but for the online viewers, can you, like the date, excuse me, the date, time, and all the golf stuff, just in case?
For the golf tournament? So the golf tournament is on Monday, well, no, June second, what day is it?
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday, okay, girl, I'm all over.
I know.
Okay, so Monday, June second, eight o'clock AM, it's at Lake Spivey Golf Course, and you can just go to ASCGA.org, I'll say it again, ASCGA.org, okay? If you log on there, you'll see all the events, not just the golf tournament, and again, you don't have to be a golfer, if you just want to donate or sponsor, then you can feel free to do so.
Yes, what's your budget now?
Ooh, shoestring, yeah. The issue, I'm trying to say this delicately, so I'm new to the Board, and Mr. Brown, you can provide some insight here now, but there hasn't really been a firm budget at all. That's why we have new leadership in place, so we can get some things on track. Yeah, I, it, there hasn't been a true budget. Last year, I know the Board blessed the ASC with some additional funding.
We did.
To help them keep going, but it's almost been like this Band-Aid situation without a plan for where to head, and so if I can say for sure, that's why we have a new team, not just a new team at the ASC, because we have a new executive director, but a new team on the Board with, you know, I'm there as the Chair, but we have folks that are in this industry that know this lane, and so I know that's gonna be a valuable asset to the Board to advise properly and make sure policies are in place, and know how to budget properly for the true needs of the Alzheimer's Services Center.
So, um, I'm.
Go ahead.
So where does your funding come from?
Donations.
Okay.
Donation support.
By federal or state?
To date, so let me say this, and this is all in support of the former executive director, okay? Ms. Sylvia was the former executive director, but she was kind of thrust into a role unexpectedly due to COVID, and I don't think that was her lane, right? She's, she's an advocate, but she was forced into a role that she really wasn't equipped or ready for. And so, even in terms of the grant space, what grants to apply for, be it at the federal level, even at the state level, what have you, I don't think she really knew that piece, and she knew she didn't know that piece, she was just doing everything she could, her mom too suffers from Alzheimer's, so her heart was there, but now we're pulling in a team of people whose skill sets are there to help get it where it needs to be.
Sounds like a grant writer would be good.
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
What other counties do you all service?
So this entire Southern Crescent area, I mean, folks can come from all over the state of Georgia, right? But currently, Clayton County, Henry, Fayette, South Fulton, DeKalb, Fulton, this whole Southern Crescent area, we have patients that come from.
So do we get funds from, from Henry, Fayette?
No, ma'am.
Other counties?
I mean, the funds they pay when they come to the facility, but not grant funds or anything else, no, ma'am, nobody's pursued that piece. Mike, do you know of any?
No.
I think that would be a good idea, since we are servicing those citizens.
Yes, ma'am. Now, I will say this, the Alzheimer's Association, the Georgia chapter, I don't know Ms. Robbins' last name, do you? But I just met her, and so I plan to talk with her some more, because she handles this whole Alzheimer's Association for this region, and so, I plan to talk to her to find out, I know there have got to be funds available, like you said, we don't just service Clayton if we're servicing this whole region, yeah.
We need to know.
We need the support, yeah.
Push that.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Let me stop.
You didn't, you didn't hear.
No, I didn't, I didn't hear a thing, no, ma'am.
Let me start by saying thank you, Sylvia, bless her heart, she did what she could do.
She did, and she kept it together, she kept the doors open.
We need to truly, truly thank her, and many of the events, she had her mother right there on her hip.
Yes.
And so, we want to, I want to publicly thank her for that, and Mike Brown, you've been there for, forever, so I want to thank you for sticking in it, Danielle, with you coming on board, you've really began to take this and launch it, to begin to move forward. We have funded the Alzheimer's, I think, three years or four years through the block ramp. We've done that a couple of years, and we, I wish we could do more, and we need to do more. We've done it with the block ramp, we also did it with, I think, two emergency fundings to keep it open for a while. We have got to figure out a way to do more, and please let me know, I'm always gonna be here for you all in trying to make this happen, and to figure out that two hundred and twenty-five thousand. and to figure out that 225,000 is a drop in the bucket for what you all truly do. And we know we've had a couple of providers try to come through there and really want to take it over. So let's, um, let's really stay adamant and strategic in how we move forward and get this totally off the ground, and not just rolling in the dirt.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
And it would be good to kind of look at some of the Alzheimer's centers, Ms. Sylvia talked about this all the time, to see where they get their, they get their funding from.
Yes.
They have a place for mom and some different...
And I will say this, and thank the board, we were approved for some beautification funds, so we did apply for that, and so just to bring this place kind of back to life, that says a lot to the people that are bringing their loved ones, right? You got the place looking, it's gotta look good for people to be attracted to want to come, and so...
But the Alzheimer's Association has some grant funding too, that we definitely need to apply for and look at too, so.
Yes.
I'll be sending you all some stuff over.
Thank you.
Please don't forget to check with these counties that...
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
Because they may be having, that's awesome right there, because they may be able to help out. Henry is right there, and like I said, we have a great relationship with the chairwoman over there, so let's, you know, all the counties that we're serving, let's ask them how they can help out as well.
Yes.
Thank you for the awesome presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, and welcome. Thank you so much, all right.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, thank you. All right. Board members, are there any other questions at this time, any comments? All right, all right. Well, at this time, it is now 7:45, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for coming out. Have an awesome night.